Okay, slide thirty-three, I'd like to call the special meeting of the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, the redevelopment agency, the Victorville Water District and City Council, and the city of Victorville. First order of business is public comment, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council under the public comment item? And, we have two items that we're discussing tonight, and we have one that might last a bit longer, and so we're going to reverse the items. So, the first item will be item number two, actually, which is the discussion on the stimulus bill. Ahma.
Honorable mayor and council members, I will provide a brief overview of stimulus plan, as you are aware, President Obama signed into Lauterwea a 787 billion stimulus plan. Staff has been looking at the plan to see what projects in the city can be potentially funded by this plan. There's a long list of categories in the bill, and some of them are listed above, such as transportation and infrastructure, energy, science and technology, education, aid to the state, and this is mainly in form of helping the states with the budget shortfalls, tax cuts, small business incentives, healthcare, and funding for low-income families, and other projects such as money for defense and federal buildings. One of the questions that staff has been trying to get an answer to is how much money will be available for local infrastructure projects. There is 27.5 billion for highway and road infrastructure projects in the bill, and California may receive 10% of that. And there's additional 1.5 billion in form of grants, so the total is about 29 billion. Now, of the money that California will receive, 30% of that money will go to the local agencies, and that's mainly through Sandbag. And Sandbag will again have a list of projects that they will prioritize, and then allocate the money to those projects. The state will receive the funding in 21 days, and the funds must be obligated in 120 days. So, as soon as the money is available, we need to have projects that are ready to go so we can obligate the money for those projects.
One in nine?
We do have a list of projects, and I'll get to that in a little bit. (laughing). Sandbag has estimated that they will be receiving 60 million for the local projects in San Bernardino County. Now, if that, if there's the 60 million, and if they follow the step formula which divides money 75, 25, there's 15 million that may be available for the valley and high des- if we split between valley and high desert, we may have 15 million available for high desert area, and that would have to be split further into the cities that are in mountain and high desert area. Few weeks ago, Caltrans and Sandbag requested all the cities to submit projects, and what basically they did is they asked for a list of projects that will be ready to go, and at that time, we were looking at 180 days. And what we did is we came up with all the projects that are within the city that are ready or can be ready within 180 days to start construction. As you can see, the list, if you do the total, it's over 150 million that is within the city. The top project on our list is La Mesa and Isquale. That project alone costs as much as all the money that will be available for San Bernardino County. So, the potential for getting fully funded on La Mesa and Isquale is very slim. But as the, as Sandbag comes up with the criteria, and Caltrans comes up with the criteria, how they will prioritize the project, and how much money will be available, we will probably reprioritize this list and resubmit it to them. Besides infrastructure projects, staff is also looking at other projects and programs that can be funded through this bill. Last week, we prepared an application and submitted to state EPA for our sub-regional sewer plant at SCLA, and we're requesting 30 million. And the money is coming from one, almost 1.4 billion that's available for sewer treatment plants within the bill. State may receive anywhere from 285 to 425 million for sewer-related projects. Addition to that, there is about 4 billion for reclaimed water and water projects in the bill. We don't have a list of projects now, but we will be looking at the projects that are within the city that may be eligible for this category. There is money available for energy projects such as solar energy projects. There is about 2 billion for CDBG money, and we think we may be able to apply for U-turn or after school, after-school programs through that, that funding source. There is also money available for police equipment and operation, and there's about 2 billion that we can apply for and receive funding. There's money available for airport projects, there's funding available for parks, projects, there's also money for transit and shelter equipment. We have itemized the total dollar amount available in the last column, but it, some of those, there is a list, there's a long list of what projects may or may not qualify for that funding. So, we will be working with the state agency, state agencies, to find out which projects will qualify, and which projects within the city we can submit under those categories. Some other money, funding that is available is also money for youth employment for this summer, also for senior employment, and we will be looking at that too. Another thing in here is money for NSP, it's the money that we received from last bailout, city received a little over $5 billion for neighborhood stabilization program, and economic development is preparing a plan to utilize the money. There is additional 2 billion in this bill for that project. As far as what we are doing right now, in next couple of weeks, we will be working with Sandbag and Caltrans, we'll be trying to find out how they will prepare the list of the project, what will be the criteria for prioritization of the projects, how much funding will they allow for area up here, for the desert and mountain area? And according to that, we will submit the projects and see if we can get some of the funding allocated to our city. The other thing we'll be working on is we'll be talking to state agencies, they'll be overseeing the other funds that are not transportation, and, and, and trying to get on the priority list of the projects in next couple of weeks. We will coordinate with the city staff, all the other city departments, to see if there is other project. As money becomes available, we'll be notifying them and letting them know that there is a potential for funding, so all the other departments can apply for funds as well. We plan to update city council on a regular basis. As information becomes available, we probably will be sending memos out, city manager will provide information to city manager so he can share it with you. We will also be presenting items in the next few council meetings, if need be, action items, if there is a requirement for action by the council to apply for some of these projects. This concludes my report, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Could you go back to the slide that showed the Mesa and then Bear Valley Road Bridge over, what is that project? I've not seen that on any list before.
Bear Valley Road Bridge Project over BNSF railway. I'll defer that to city engineer, it's one of the projects that was put on the list by the engineering department.
Mayor and members of the council, that project was originally a project that was supposed to be included in the Bear Valley Enhancement Project. If you remember, the town of Apple Valley, city of Asperia, and city of Victorville collectively got federal funding to completely reconstruct Bear Valley Road, about five and a half miles worth of it. That was located within it, but because of environmental issues that were brought up by Caltrans, it jeopardized the tri-city project. We pulled that out, but essentially, the plans are done, they need to be upgraded because of a change of standards, the environmental has been cleared on it, and we would be ready to go with it if we could get some of this funding.
Well, I guess the public policy question I would have is that unless there is a widening of Bear Valley Road from the river east and west, what value is there in widening the bridge?
Right now, there are substandard lanes on the bridge, and there's only sufficient room for a very short left-turn pocket into Ridgecrest. So, the widening of the bridge is not going to go, it's not going to add through lanes, but it's going to add long dual-left lanes to make the Ridgecrest intersection work more efficiently.
Well, if you're coming, if you're coming east, I mean, if you're coming west across the river, across the bridge, approaching the entrances into either Victor Valley College or, but further west to Ridgecrest.
Right.
Why would your, you're talking about lanes, additional lanes to the right for stacking, or do it?
It would be the eastbound to northbound turning movement at Ridgecrest. Right now, the traffic builds up in the left-turn pocket and stacks in the number-one through lane, and it's actually something that we're very uncomfortable with. By widening the bridge, it allows that left-turn pocket to be extended, and in fact doubled, so that the stacking can be accommodated and still leave three through lanes unimpeded.
Well, we don't have to do it now, I would like to see the map, I have a hard time visualizing when you're traveling east to west, how in widening of the bridge facilitates right-hand movements into the college or into Ridgecrest. I'm not saying it didn't happen, but I just have a hard time visualizing.
It's a left-turn movement.
Left turn to where?
The left-turn movement from Bear Valley north onto Ridgecrest.
East, from west to east.
East to north.
Then, on Bear Valley Road, and then toward east to go north, from Bear Valley to Ridgecrest.
That's right. The left-turn pocket stacks up.
Talking about the left-turn pocket coming out of Ridgecrest?
It's on Bear Valley Road going into Ridgecrest.
Going west on Bear Valley, I should turn to.
No, it's going east.
Bridge across the railroad track, is what we're talking about.
Correct.
That was my question, if you're coming, and maybe I'm confused, but if you're coming from east to west, and you're going to make a movement onto Ridgecrest, you're going to turn right, go north.
It's an eastbound movement, you're heading into Apple Valley.
That's not my question, Sean. If you're going east to west, you're traveling Bear Valley Road, east to west, and you're going to turn onto Ridgecrest, you don't turn left, you drive into the high-grade material plant, you're going to turn right to go onto Ridgecrest, and I'm having a hard time visualizing left-hand turning pockets.
All right, then, it's, it's, it's west to east, you're going eastbound, you're coming from the I-15, going east towards Apple Valley, you cross over the bridge, over the railroad tracks, and then you enter a left-turn pocket to turn left and go north on Ridgecrest.
I think in this instance, a map would be preferred.
There it is.
Sure.
There it is, right there.
If you're, you know, I'll get with this, I don't want to occupy the session on that.
We can show that, yeah. That's what the bridge widening is intended to be.
Okay, on the, assuming that we get the, and that's an estimate, the 15 billion dollars for, for the high desert out of the 60, how is that going to be a portion to the, to the cities?
The 15 million, if it's allocated to the high desert, and there is a subcommittee, that's a mountain-high-desert subcommittee, then they'll have to meet and figure out how they will prioritize their projects. That process has not been established yet.
So, there's no formula, just whatever the committee.
I think if this in fact materializes, 15 million does materialize for the high desert, to suggest that you equally portion it out, like we have done with Measure I, would be a mistake. I think what you need to do with the 15 million.
I am, I am, I hear you.
My four years of getting beat up, I think you need to prioritize that, and they want their shovel in the ground as quickly as they can, there's no project out there more upfront than Isquale is now. So, I mean, in terms of front-loading an idea, there's the moment. If that money materializes, and the five of you sit down and start discussing it, the argument ought to be that you delegate as much of that 15 million as you can, certainly we can get Measure I for some more, up to that 15 million we need anyway, 15, 16 million we need now anyway, front-load it into the Isquale, it'll help the Apple Valley and obviously Bear Valley Road.
Yes.
But does the process envision that it would be a mountain-desert decision, or will this ultimately be a Sandbag Board decision?
Well, we're still not sure on that, we've, we've asked for them to do the 75-25 split, then the 25 that would come up here would be mountain-desert, so it would include not just the Victor Valley area, but also the mountain areas, Barstow. So, then you, then you have, what, nine or 10 involved in the process, it becomes a little bit more difficult to get just that 15 million. I mean, the reality is, this billions and billions of dollars that's being sent down to us ends up being very little when it gets here, so, I mean, we'll be, we'll be fighting for as much of it as we can possibly get. Obviously, point well taken, Mike, that 15 million would be best spent on La Mesa and Isquale, it is the most shovel-ready project, but there is pushback from Asperia saying Ranchero is more shovel-ready, which I argued that they don't have right-of-way acquisition done where we do, so, have to see how the rest of the mountain-desert area folks feel. But, yeah, it, it's a Sandbag Board decision as to how it's allocated, and whether or not we get that 25% is still up in the air, right, Ahma?
That is correct, there is, there has not been a formal action by the board as to how they will prioritize the money.
Well, I can't, I can't conceive of a rational argument that would argue anything other than 75-25. I just, I'm hopeful that when the, assuming it's 25, when it gets up here, that it's a mountain-desert final decision as opposed to a mountain-desert recommendation that gets sowed by the full board. Curious to know what that, what that mechanism is supposed to be.
Well, we'll definitely update you as, as we hear more, at this point, that, that has not taken place yet. I don't know if they're going to call a special meeting, or what they're going to do now that the bill's actually been signed. They have the project list, if the project list does have to go before the board at that time, I know that we'll have opportunities to address how the money's spent in each of our jurisdictions, but, yeah, it's still, at this point, still up in the air, we have no clear direction on.
Half of our project, if it's shovel-ready, within the 45 days or the 60 days.
Right, right.
Our next item is discussion and possible action regarding SCLA infrastructure funding, and we have Keith Messler.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for allowing me to speak before you this evening. I'm actually excited to be speaking to you about the item that you have before you. It's an item that we call the SCLA Infrastructure Funding Program, and really, this was staff's intent to try to share with you, from a very comprehensive perspective, all that's planned at SCLA, and there's a large multitude of infrastructure projects proposed at SCLA. And we thought, given where we're at today, given the actions that have been undertaken by the council previously, we thought it'd be appropriate to share with you the level of diligence that has gone into the various projects that we're, we're ready to start construction on. I couldn't start out without recognizing the assistance that I had in putting this together, because I drew, drew the short straw, I got to speak to you, and I got to prepare that package that I had delivered over the weekend. But, the, the content of the report couldn't have been done if we didn't have the help of your city engineer, Sean McGlade, he was very helpful from the technical design perspective. Ahma Jaker was very helpful from the technical O&amp;M perspective, your finance director, John Sullivan, was very helpful in developing those pretty spreadsheets that you have in the report, and, very impressive spreadsheets, I mean, if we actually tried to print them out on regular scale, they would have probably stretched from here to Roy Rogers Drive. Got formulas in it and everything, they linked to other, 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 other files, it was pretty impressive work that John Sullivan was helpful with us on, and also Glenn Casanova's been helpful from the utilities perspective. The report very simply is intended to identify the public projects in a clear and concise way, it's also intended to define to you what the public purpose is, why we're actually pursuing the various projects. We intended to establish economic feasibility for you, so that you have a sense that we've actually looked at, whether or not there's a feasibility in pursuing these projects, and of course, then defining a course of action, and what we're seeking from you today is the actual approval of this funding plan, so that we have a framework to go forward and actually start requesting appropriations for the various construction contracts that are forthcoming. Maybe starting out with just a little bit of background, most of you are familiar that in June, June 17th particularly, there are four guiding contracts that govern us today that we're bound by and that we're responsible for fulfilling obligations to, and that started when the council, acting as the RDA Board, approved an owner-participation agreement with the Dr. Pepper Snapple Group, whereas as part of that agreement, the basic purpose was to provide infrastructure assistance and other incentives in exchange for them locating a very large manufacturing and distribution warehouse at SCLA. With that, we had companion agreements, of course, probably the most controlling outside of the OPA was a wastewater capacity agreement that we entered into, also with Dr. Pepper, where we agreed to accept high-strength industrial waste from them in exchange for a fee, which, that fee has turned into a large component that allows our larger financing to actually pencil. And there are two other contracts that we've been working with and exercising on, a design contract that's actually principally been used to design the actual sewer plant itself, the sewer plant that we're going to be speaking to is about 85% complete in the design, and then also a construction management contract with the Benham Companies that we've been working closely with, they've been helping us finalize bid specs, go out to bid on various elements of the construction, and as of today, we're at or below the engineers' bid estimates. So, right now, the pricing for the construction projects are actually coming in very favorably. The report that you have characterizes the projects in three manners, the first project is the SCLA Westside Infrastructure Improvement Project, and, good gosh, that's hard to see, and so is that over there, but very generally, the SCLA Westside Infrastructure Improvement Project, along the west side, let's just have a laser. Really what this is intended to do is describe the projects that are directly the result of the Dr. Pepper Project. Dr. Pepper is about to close, the word I got is either Wednesday, which is tomorrow, or Monday pending some real estate exchange issues, they're set to close on the escrow for what's about 55 acres of real estate at SCLA, and they'll be closing escrow, the seller on that transaction is Sterling. But resulting from that, all the lines mean something, but for all intensive purposes, that's roads, that's curbs, that's gutters, that's underground utilities, and that's storm drain-related type improvements, and that's what we're calling SCLA Westside Infrastructure Improvements. Second item that we've characterized for you in the report is SCLA Wastewater Treatment Facility, and that's the big industrial plant that we're designed to build at the very north end of, of SCLA, and that's a two-and-a-half MGD domestic and industrial wastewater treatment plant, where the design for the industrial treatment is approximately 1 million gallons of capacity that it can handle, it can also handle approximately a million and a half gallons of intercepted domestic flow from the city's collection system. I think what's important particularly to note as we pursued the design of that project is the design has not been specific for Dr. Pepper. Dr. Pepper has certainly served as a catalyst to our endeavor in the sewer business, but it's also been an opportunity to open our eyes with respect to some larger wastewater treatment-related issues that we'll talk about in a bit. But I think important to note as a part of this sewer treatment plan is that we've designed it in such a way where the off-site infrastructure is adequate to handle future capacity for future growth from other parts of the city, particularly the southwestern part of the city, and also the western, the rest of the western part of SCLA. The project is kind of unique, at least to me, I kind of think it's cool, normal people, I think, call it relatively green in technology, it does have an anaerobic treatment component to it, where resulting from the process, there's a creation of biogas, which has an opportunity to reduce our overall utility dependence, utility dependence, we're recapturing the biogas, and we're actually burning it through generators that the city currently owns, that reduces our electric bill fairly substantially, but then also to help, help treat the temperature of the influent into the plant, we're actually recapturing the wasted steam that actually comes off the generated self, generator itself to maintain optimal temperature in the treatment process. The third project that we've defined for you is what we call the SCLA Water and Reclaimed Water Project, both water, potable water and reclaimed water combined, and then speaking to how it relates to the west side, the potable water system is really designed to provide a delivery system to Dr. Pepper, but it also gets the system started along that west side, so that we're able to accommodate larger industrial users in the near future. The biggest issue that the potable water system helps us solve is it allows us to get the volume and the pressure of water needed to satisfy our industrial growth opportunities on the west side. The reclaimed water project is basically a backbone to your purple pipe system, which is intended to take the 2,300 plus or minus acre-feet of treated water from the plant, and then have that available for resale, either for turf purposes or to Victorville One is probably the, the most likely primary consumer of that wastewater. Speaking to the, the purpose, why are we doing this, from a redevelopment agency perspective, it's fairly straightforward and fairly simple. The Dr. Pepper Project, when we look at a project like that, it's about the jobs, it's about the 210 jobs that they're going to directly employ at SCLA, it's about the tax increment, it does come down to money, and when you look at a project like Dr. Pepper, they're a significant contributor of tax increment. In addition to that, I think you have to look at what also something like Dr. Pepper brings, and what Dr. Pepper brings is a, is a following, is a number of suppliers, raw product suppliers, that have to be close to their operation. One of the things that we're enjoying right now is the fact that Sterling is preparing to sign a lease, if they haven't done so already, with a company that manufactures the plastic bottles that's going to be used in the production of the Dr. Pepper Snapple, I'm sorry, the Snapple iced tea products, and that's a project, that's a project that will also bring significant employment to SCLA, we're actually estimating about 200 employees from them. If I didn't say it already, Dr. Pepper's close date is either tomorrow or next Monday on the real estate. The sewer system improvements, why are we pursuing this? One thing that I did for you is I put together a chart, and one of the things that has opened our eyes to this sewer plant being something more than just a plant for the Dr. Pepper Company, but instead, to be available on a much larger scale to serve the residents of this community, I think is what you're looking at in this chart, and there's two lines there, and I put them there to try to clear up any potential confusion, but the blue line is the blue line that was actually in the report that you reviewed, and that was based on my knowledge of what was proposed in the form of VVWA rates forthcoming. After this report was put together, I was made aware that they, that the VVWA prepared a financing. a financing plan for their go-forward operations. And it turned out that their rates now are projected to be even higher than what was identified in the blue. So what's identified in the red is suggesting that VVWA is currently pursuing a rate increase from 1190 today to 24, and then you'll see subsequent rate increases thereafter. In addition to that, in the very, in the small corner, you'll see an interest in their pursuing a raise or a rise in their connection fees, almost doubling the capital connection fees. Why this is important is, from my perspective, you, as a council, have very little involvement in that approval process. And very simply put, we have traditionally just passed that rate increase along to your constituents. And we all know our constituents have very little appreciation for these kinds of rate increases. So from our perspective, we saw our ability to build a plant and treat domestic effluent as an opportunity to treat it at a more cost-effective rate and maybe in theory be able to balance out the rate structure so that you're not continuously beholden to the, to the exact rate increases that the VVWA passes on to you. The additional purpose is, of course, that just in general, building the sewer plant, both the plant itself and its off-site related improvements, does increase capacity, overall treatment capacity to the city of Victorville. It does increase capacity to the collection system that you currently have. And there's an undergoing study right now that's actually identifying where we're reaching capacities and at certain lines throughout our collection system. And this allows us to help alleviate those, those problems. It allows us to accommodate additional industrial users. Why this is important from an economic development perspective is I can count on four occasions now in my history here with the city, that on four occasions, we've lost out on four large manufacturing operations, two beverage, one was a salad dressing user and another was a burrito guy. Food, I think, is a niche industry that we can capitalize on. And by having a plant designed the way we've currently got it designed in such a way that it can be expanded just by adding modules, I think is definitely a complement to your economic development goals. And then finally, the, why are we doing this with respect to water and reclaimed water? I think the simplest way to characterize why we're making the water and reclaimed water improvements is that it provides needed capacity. It reduces our dependence on aqueduct water. I think that's fairly important. And it really starts setting in motion a backbone system for your larger reclaimed water plants. When we looked at the economic feasibility, all of those three projects combined that I just mentioned to you is what is the $67 million price tag. The sewer plant alone is not $67 million. And if you, if you, if you could, there's the pullout in your package that actually breaks that out in much greater detail. And it actually shows to you the funding sources for each and every single project that makes up those three defined projects that I just shared with you. But of the three, the SCLA West Side, West Side Infrastructure, that's $10.5 million. The way we've got it planned and the way we looked at the investment from that perspective is what can we fund from a redevelopment agency tax increment perspective? This is where we looked at what tax increment Dr. Pepper is going to bring. Dr. Pepper committed to an assessed valuation of $100 million for their plant. Right now, the estimates that I've seen as to where their real costs are, they're probably in the 115 to 120 million dollar cost range, which is actually good for us because that means more tax increment for us. But based upon what they agreed to us in the 100 million, we have a guarantee of about $580,000 annually of discretionary tax increment that we can use to repay ourselves in terms of the money invested for these improvements, or they can be bonded for future improvements. We also identified a number of restricted funds to balance out that $10.5 million equation. The economic feasibility was much more involved when we looked at the SCLA wastewater treatment plant. That plant, those costs, both off-site and on-site, is $46.1 million. When we looked at that price tag and tried to determine how to finance that project, we looked at our traditional operating practices, our traditional operating numbers for our last two fiscal years. And one of the compelling things that we found is that we generate a lot of revenue in the sewer account. I think the current cash balance that I reported in, in your report is about $17 million. How that accumulates is, in the rate structure that we currently have, VVWA, as noted up there on the chart, will charge us 1190. We pay, we charge that plus an amount to pay for our capital needs and to pay for our operating and maintenance of the system. So we'll actually charge the residents the 1995. Because we have not been able to keep up with our capital needs, money has been accumulating. So with that, we were able to identify, obviously, the cash that you have available, but there's certainly an opportunity there to put that money to a greater use, to leverage it to a much greater purpose and expand your sewer treatment capacities. We then prepared some projections. Exhibit four, I think, is the exhibit that deals with the projections. And what we did in this analysis is if we treated this endeavor as a system-wide improvement, which it is, it's adding to your overall capacity, it's adding to the overall discharge needs for the city. And you plug in all of the revenues that the system currently realizes, you plug in the debt service, you plug in our new operating costs to operate and maintain that treatment plant, and you also maintain the level projected, the level of projected spending in your capital improvement program. The most compelling part of that exhibit tells you that you're still operating cash positive. That's good. That means you have money available to spend not only on the debt service of this plant, but also the capital improvements that your system needs. And in theory, because of that, you should not have to raise rates. You should not have to raise rates based on what you normally charge the $8.05. The final feasibility analysis we pursued, and it's probably the easiest, was the SCLA Water and Wastewater improvements. Those improvements in total are $11.27 million. And that's being funded. We've identified funding sources to include primarily connection fees. They use a lot of grants. We've been very fortunate as a city to use grants. We're actually in a position where if we don't use these grants and spend them, we could lose these grants. So we've actually got projects included in the Water and Wastewater project that can put those grants to good use. I should add particularly, though, in the differential between what connection fees and grants can't pay for, the water utility is actually being used to cash flow. I'll be clear about that. They're being used to cash flow improvements until it can be, until it can recover the cost of those improvements through connection fees, which it would charge to, to users such as VB1 and VB2. This chart above is the attempt to clearly summarize what each of those projects cost. In the case of what our funding plan is for the SCLA West Side Infrastructure, we're relying principally on tax increment. As a part of the approval of the agreements back in June, we actually did an enter, did a project area loan from one project area to another. The funds are available, the funds are waiting to be spent. So from the perspective of how to fund the SCLA West Side Infrastructure, if it's not from restricted funds, that amount is coming from a loan from the RDA, which SCLA should expect to repay back within a very short period of time. I did just get some news earlier today from our underwriters who are here in the audience to speak to any financial matters, that SCLA is appearing to have some capacity for additional debt. And if the council did decide to choose to pursue that, then we could pursue repaying the Bear Valley project area sooner than contemplated in this report. We also found out that Bear Valley even has capacity of its own, so that if the loan from the Bear Valley to SCLA had to stay in place longer than imagined, we do have some capacity in Bear Valley to where we can fund some of the projects in its project area and not neglect those projects. The sewer project and the plan of finance for the sewer project, we're definitely putting to use your fund balance, the $17 million that's reported from the treasurer's office, putting that to use. And on an interim basis, what we're expecting to do is use that money to fund the improvements that we can't fund legally from a tax-exempt bond issue. So anything that's quote taxable, we would fund with cash until such a time that the market turned around and we're able to issue a taxable financing with much more favorable terms. Also, today I was advised that there might be a market for taxable and we might be able to preserve some of our cash if we so choose. It does rely significantly on issuing tax-exempt bonds for those parts of the plant and off-site infrastructure that is public in nature and not tied directly to the benefit of Dr. Pepper. Sure?
I would, why would we want to pay down one of the project indebtedness into the RDA? Why wouldn't we want to bond and use that money for something else? Is there an advantage to paying off? Does that give us our, our debt amount goes up according to that amount that we're paying off?
It just, if I'm understanding the question correctly, you're speaking to the redevelopment agency loan structure.
Right.
You don't have, well, you have to pay back the inter-project area debt. But SCLA could issue debt of its own, additional debt, to pay off that obligation.
Okay. My question is, what's the incentive to do that? I mean, why would we want to do that when we could use that money for some other project? More, the additional indebtedness?
Well, you do have to pay Bear Valley back. Bear Valley needs to be repaid. There, there is a general restriction on inter-project area financings. They definitely have to be short-term in nature.
I got you.
But... The tax-exempt bonds, I think, just closing out on that note, would leverage your revenues, the property taxes, the reclaimed water revenues that you currently receive to operate your sewer enterprise. And then finally, with respect to the water and reclaimed water system, I mentioned that you're principally funding that with grants, connection fees, and what's left over is paid for with cash that'll be fronted until connection fees come online. I think the important note in this regard, and in this chart that you see above, is close to 20% of the total funding of the total $67 million is actually coming from grants or connection fees. So in, if I were to conclude, what staff is asking you to do tonight is to approve this funding plan. It's not asking you to make an appropriation of funds. That will come at a later date. But what we're asking you to do is approve this funding plan. So that serves as our bible. So that's, so this serves as our guidance so that when we go forward, maybe at the very, you know, maybe at the next council meeting, and we're requesting an appropriation of funds for a contract, construction contract-related item, we're asking that you use this funding plan as the guidance to authorize the eventual approval of those construction items in the future. And I think it's appropriate that you should be able to rely on this document when being asked to approve additional appropriations for projects that are related to any of these three just mentioned, to ensure that those appropriations are in line with what was originally I think with that, unless there's any other questions or comments, I do have some technical assistants in the audience beyond the department heads. Phil Folds is our construction manager from the Benham Companies, definitely available to answer any technical-related questions to the status of the actual plant construction. Also Jeff Kinsel and Janice Williams are here as well to address any of the financing related.
I just have one question, Keith. You mentioned about taking a loan from the sewer restricted funds? And that you said there was quite a bit in there? And that will be paid back?
The...
Since it is a restricted fund?
Right, right. The sewer funds that get used, let me see if I can answer your question. Well, first of all, the sewer funds are going to be used, the available cash will be used to pay for quote improvements that are in your capital improvement plan. And to the extent those funds are used to pay for quote public, the public part of the sewer plant or the off-site related improvements, that will not be repaid back. That'll be your contribution from, to the capital improvement program. However, for funds that are used for not public, which is the Dr. Pepper side of the plant, or the Dr. Pepper side of the infrastructure, that's what I spoke to in the report, to where all of the connection fees that are derived from future growth should be replenishing directly the capital account. The way we've got this structured is we're keeping Dr. Pepper totally separate. We've got an imaginary boundary between the two, and we're making sure that Dr. Pepper is paying its fair share and only its fair share. It's not dipping over into public and the public's not dipping over into the private.
Keith, I have a question on the 1.9 million dollars that they pay annually?
Yes.
For, you know, for the removal of their product. That's, is that based on gallons or just figure that?
It was, it was formula-driven, but to simplify the answer, really what it did is it looked at what its capital share of the plant was. The total plant, just inside the property lines, is about $30 million of that $46 million number. Of that $30 million, about 50% of that can be directly attributed to the Dr. Pepper side. So we took the capital cost associated with that 50%, let's just call it $15 million for simplicity, took that number and then added what are, what their share of the operating and maintenance costs would be. Their share, we determined, the O and M cost is about 40% of the total treatment cost at the plant. So adding those two numbers is how we arrived at their, their fair share. The one nice thing about that is that that is a guaranteed payment, that is a contractually obligated payment for 20 years. So it's an easier contract to use to help leverage a better financing when needed. I think also, in speaking maybe back to the public policy with respect to being able to attract industrial users, future industrial users, the biggest challenge that we have had and the reason why we've lost out on many of those industrial users is when they come to Victorville and they pull the ordinance that VVWA has that establishes their rate structure. You know, I think in comparison purposes, we can say Dr. Pepper was, you know, approximately $15 million for their capital. But when we look at and we use their formula, VVWA's formula, to derive what the connection cost would be if Dr. Pepper instead hooked to them, you're looking at a $38 or $39 million. So dramatic difference. And, and I'm not so sure it's a fault of their own, it's just that their intended purpose is a lot different than what our intended purpose is with, with the design of the plant that we have today.
What you have here is you have not only the facility that would treat the first, the first part of the product that comes out of these plants, and there may be future plants of all, but it is an infrastructure that provides not only for the future of SCLA, but for the west, the west side when, when building this back in gear again.
It is safe, it is fair to say that this is a larger public project. There is a private component to it, but this is serving a larger public need as well.
Any question?
Any questions? I would just say that I think this is probably a textbook case of how an RDA ought to work, how it fulfills the redevelopment agency laws of this state, taking the tax increment money, leveraging it. Taking the tax increment money, leveraging it, abilities that not only create immediate jobs, but develop a backbone structure for icing other business and industry to load more jobs. And that has always been the purpose, the stated public policy purpose of the development agency. So I think, you know, I've, I've sat through a lot of these types of presentations before. This is probably taking one of the most complex analyses, both in terms of volume and thickness of the discharge, matching it with the revenue analysis and the cost analysis, bending in a way that brought as much clarity to a buzzy subject like this is, as I've seen. And I just want to say, having watched you make these presentations all these many years and remember just a clerk behind the counter at the golf course, and listening to you make this presentation today, Keith, you've come a long way. This was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would echo that. I, I get a call on Saturday and Keith says, are you at home? And I said, yeah. And he said, I'm coming by, I'm going to give you a packet. And, you know, when he dropped this off, it was just small talk. But then I actually had the chance to read through it. And I, I've never seen something done so well, so in-depth, explaining the issues so well. You know, it was my understanding that we were going to have Logan Olds here tonight to present whatever options VVWA had on the table. I have some six pages from them that outline those options, but they don't go anywhere into the detail that you and the rest of city staff went into. And I just think it, it makes it, it makes it very clear on, you know, how this can be funded and why we'd be even looking to do it. I had some tremendous concerns with the numbers because all I was hearing was numbers. But the documentation you provided here, in essence, as you stated, somewhat like a bible for us to govern by and appropriate funds by, makes it, I think, very easy on this council to, to look at this decision and go forward with it. Without this document, I don't think I would feel as comfortable. And so I thank you and the rest of the staff for spending the countless hours that you did in putting this together. It's, it's a shame we don't have Logan here to even answer to those rate increases that would be coming down the pike. But I can't for the life of me see this council passing on rate increases, much like taxes coming down from the state of California. That just makes absolutely no sense. We have no control of our own destiny. This gives us somewhat of a control of that destiny. My only question to you in looking forward on this is how do you get the rest of the capacity citywide to go to our plant? So, not for answer tonight.
Thank you.
I told Keith outside before we came in, I thanked him for such a wonderful packet. I too called and asked if I was home, ran up as in his sweats, and I said, what are you doing? It's Valentine's Day. Get home. He says, well, I'm going home to cook right after I go get chocolate-covered strawberries. And I asked him out there just now, did you cook? He goes, yep. Did you get strawberries? Yep. So you all did a wonderful job on this packet. And I thank you very much. This is, it was, it really was very interesting and very clear. And I appreciate it. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Well, I said, I think you set the bar, Keith, for this, if every project that we worked, it's like this, it would make, it would make it much easier for us to make a decision. And so, thank you. And I know you came on Saturday and delivered those on your own. So thank you. And the staff, our public works director, our city engineer, and our water director, I know that we're all involved in, John Solomon. So thank you all of you, all of you for a fine report, outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess the, the recommended action here would be to approve the infrastructure funding plan for SCLA. I would entertain a motion. Okay, there's no other items on the agenda. We'll adjourn the meeting.
Go home?
Nope.
At seven.